Six fifty-nine.
Who is that?
Joyce. Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, September 30th, 2013. I would like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So the agenda for tonight is we're going to go through our read mail. We will have inputs, we'll have the public input and Board member updates. We have a couple requests at 7:20, which is one day is for, one of them is for one-day beer and license for the St. Anne's Church. We have a Castle on the Trees sign approval. And at 7:30, we have two presentations, one from MAPC and one from SANS. And then at eight o'clock, we're going to have a joint meeting with the Finance Committee and possibly the School Committee to talk about budget planning. At 8:20, we're going to talk about the November 4th special town meeting. Eight forty, eight forty, we'll have updates from the Town Administrator. And at 8:55 is the consent agenda and minutes approval. With that, Mr. Bergman.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. First item in the mail is a communication from the Electric Light Department with a proposal of patients for banners associated with the 300th anniversary and doesn't show up well in black and white. But the proposal is to, so you can't see where the two red dots are here, I'm sorry, but location of new utility balls. If you go out to King Street in the direction of White, you can also see the banners that are, that are out. So that's, that's great to see. But we'll get you a better copy to look at if there are any further comments about location, we can deal with those. Next is an update from the Treasurer with a report on OPEB valuation. And the bottom line of this long report, which we can schedule for further discussion, is that in the last, in the reporting periods, where it's a two-year period, 2010 and then 2012, and that during that period of time, our unfunded OPEB liability increased by $3.7 million. So it now stands at $36.6 million. That's despite the fact that we're putting money in, and we're still putting more money in than many other communities, but it's a clear signal that we can't stop putting more money in. So the strategy that we're bringing to special town meeting, for example, to increase this year's OPEB appropriation, is heading in the right direction. So it's, but we can schedule some more quality time, perhaps in, in FinCom to go through that. And a similar report has been done for the Electric Department as well, and they're reviewing theirs. Next is a notice from the Massachusetts Selectmen's Association of a Fall Conference that's going to be held on Saturday, October 5th, in Franklin. It starts at eight o'clock in the morning and will be over by 1:30 if anyone is interested. If anyone beyond Jenna is interested in going, please let me know and we'll register you for that. Also, the, for those interested, the annual meeting of the Massachusetts Municipal Association will be in January, on 24th and 25th, that's in Boston, at the Heinz Convention Center. And if anyone wanted to register for that, let us know and we will see to that as well. Next is a communication we received from the State Ethics Commission. It's, they have been updating a series of guidance documents and sending it out to all municipalities. The latest one concerns making and receiving job recommendations. So we'll have that, we have that on file here and it's also available online. And that's what I have in the agenda packet for this week.
Thank you. We can go to public input now. Anybody in? Mr. Del Fiori.
Jerry Del Fiori, I emailed both the Board of Selectmen and Planning Board on the language in Article 13. The way I read it under vehicular retail sales, it says any use involving dot-dot-dot. And I just want to be sure, and Marilyn assures me it's not the intent of the Planning Board, that that doesn't inadvertently outlaw private sales, which would be a use, certainly not a commercial use.
Right. I believe the intent is to stop businesses from going into that district, so.
Right. But I just want to be sure that, you know, the intent and the language doesn't lead to creative enforcement or inadvertently outlawing something that people hadn't intended out for.
Right. I think, I think it's a point well taken that it's for commercial, but we can, that's the intent. As my understanding is the intent, so we have to make sure, keep that, or if you want to have Chris or Town Council look at it one more time.
Yeah, they have addressed that.
Okay.
And I know that Chris Heap is in the loop on Jerry's question.
Okay.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry. Anybody else? All right. For now, we can move on to Board members. Alex?
Nothing.
Joe?
Just one thing quickly, in reference to the 300th anniversary, we're doing a fundraising that should be starting very shortly. Businesses should have received a letter from the Main Committee. Chairman, Mr. Homer, myself and Deb Leflam will be contacting all businesses in an effort to raise a good number of funds for the 300th anniversary. So any businesses out there, if you haven't been contacted, let us know, or you can contact us ahead of time, we'll set up an appointment to go see you personally.
Well, the raffle, do you want to mention the raffle? Football raffle? The Patriots?
You could.
Oh, yeah.
There's a raffle going on by the Friends of the 300th. It's a tremendous chance, there's four sets of tickets that are being sold for a Patriots game, premium seating, special parking, you get to eat in the tent before and after the game. It's the whole package. And that's, those sales should be starting out shortly. And the Friends of the 300th, too, are having a big raffle in November at the Holiday Inn over in Bloxville.
Okay. Jenna?
Sure. Last Sunday, Littleton Track Organization put on the road race. It was a great success. Wanted to mention also this past Friday, another successful event, was the Lewson Police Department put on their Council on Aging Breakfast and gave them lovely T-shirts, which the folks in town really, really liked. And I wanted to mention that October 26th is the Masquerade Ball for Rotary. They're selling tickets to raise funds for the Shelter Box, which they had out on the Common back in the spring. So if you want to go out for a fancy evening, please see a Rotary member to get tickets for that.
Jillson?
The only update I have is that I sat down with Mark Martinari last week during the week of no meetings, so I had to do something. So we sat down and we talked about the medical marijuana and how we were going to approach that. And the part that I came away with, or the part that I brought to him, was that I think I want to start some sort of public outreach. So I want to maybe put, somehow come up with a poll between us and the Planning Board, you know, something like a survey that we can put it out. And then I want to put out another questionnaire and say, you know, here's where we're at, these are our restrictions, you know, what do you suggest we do this? And I think it'll help out with the, with people being able to give input without having to come to a meeting. So if someone can't come to a meeting, they'll still be able to get some input in. And it doesn't limit from also sending emails, but I thought maybe it would just be one more way to reach out to people and get their opinions on that. And his input was that he had some ideas on how they want to start with the zoning of this and to make sure it's something that meets the town's needs. So that's all I have. We can move on to 7:20, a little bit ahead. I think I'll go ahead, I see Mr. Clancy in the audience, so we can move ahead with this one. This is for a request for a one-day beer and license permit on behalf of the St. Anne's Parish Casino Night Committee. And I believe Steph has ensured that all the documentation is here, including the wholesaler, the insurance, and the tips bartender. Is that true, Keith? Everything's checked off?
Yes, it does.
Ms. Clancy, would you like to add anything?
No, other than I just learned that apparently we're conflicting with the Masquerade Ball for Rotary Club, so that's disappointing. But if you can't make that, it'd love me to come to our event. It's Casino Night, there won't be any money change, depends basically what's going to happen, is guests will be purchasing chips with their donation. At the end of the night, the chips will be used to purchase raffle tickets for prizes. And if we're lucky enough to turn a profit, we're going to donate all of the tickets to the Lewson Fishes Food Pantry at Debenhams, which is an organization that St. Anne's has had a long standing relationship. And I would like to thank the Chair and Mr. Bergman for bringing this forward so promptly.
You're welcome. It's a good event and it just sounds like any other casino you go to. There's no money change in here, it only goes one way, right? That's my experience, right?
That's mine as well.
Well, you know, we haven't been getting as many one-day license applications since the new policy went into effect of requiring tips certified. So we used to have a lot more.
I wonder if that's the difference or just a change. Okay. No, it sounds like a great event and hopefully we'll be there.
Thank you.
All right. Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General, you know, before we go, Chief, are you all set? What does, sorry, I didn't see your comments anyway. Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 138, subsection 14, to issue a special one-day beer and wine license to St. Anne's Parish, 75 King Street, Littleton, for Casino Night, an event to be held on Saturday, October 26th, 2013, from 7:00 to 11:00.
It's been moved a second to approve the one-day beer and wine license request. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Next item we have, and I see Sarah here is talking about this, is there anybody else coming? Do you want, are you ready to go?
Yeah.
All right. So this is a sign request. We recently had a acceptance of a gift for Aiden's Playground, and we had talked about a sign at that time, and the floor is yours to tell us about that.
So we're going to put a sign. We will have a brief note about Aiden's Playground in memory of Aiden Malio. And then we will list all the sponsors who have given $250 or more to the playground, and they'll be broken out by level. And hopefully you have that.
Yeah, it looks like a pretty good list, too.
Yes. And on the back, it will have, you know, this playground is for two- to five-year-olds, parental supervision is requested, you know, basic playground language will be on the back. And we don't have the exact placement yet, we probably won't know that until the playground goes in, but it will be in the Aiden's Playground area, it will be within the stone wall, so it's not going to be in front of that stone wall that's already existing. So it's in the existing playground footprint.
Okay.
Yeah, and the only issue had been in sign placement, just if it's away from the traveled road, if it's away from, you know, the street, then it's, then it's not, the sign is not an issue for a meeting.
So do we have, do we have a sketch or anything, or should we add something to the, to the motion saying that it just needs to be away from traffic and not impeding with things?
I have the proposed layout of the playground, and I can show you basically where it will go.
I just didn't know if anything had to be recorded with the motion.
I can give it to you.
Well, yeah, if we could just include that in the file for reference, then that would be great.
It will be, she said it will be probably where the trash can is right now, it'll be somewhere in here.
Okay.
So just say in accordance with the sketch provided.
Yeah. Thanks.
Okay, great.
I'm actually going to abstain from saying anything about this. Go ahead.
All right, I move that the Board of, I'm sorry.
You still accepting donations?
Yes.
I thought so, okay.
Castleontrees.org has all the information for donations.
Okay, thank you.
Ready? Okay. Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Littleton Sign Bylaw, subsection 173-34C, to grant the request of Castle on the Trees to erect a sign, excuse me, for Aiden's Playground on the town-owned property at 300 King Street, as specified in the drawing.
I move in a second to approve the sign request from the Aiden's Playground. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I abstain.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
All right. We are cruising tonight. Yeah, is Emmy?
Yeah, Emmy, easy, Chris is here, ready to go.
Okay. Yeah, let me, I'm sorry, I'm just going to go with Sands first. See a New Son, that may be a little more brief, and then she has the option of sticking around. So this week, I can turn it over to you, but you're here just as requested a few months ago to come and give us an update. And can you give us a brief background of the program, when it started, things like that? And then what I was looking for is, you know, what you've done as far as, you know, outreach.
We were probably well over, well, several years, we have approached the different committees in town, including the Selectmen by way of Town Management and the School Committee and Churches, Council on Aging, to bring this proposal forward regarding MSP interface, referral and resource service. So in doing that, we then decided that as an organization, See a New Son Foundation is a nonprofit, and we founded after the unfortunate suicide loss of my son and my husband's son, and brothers and sisters and so forth. And we decided that, and my own experience as being a school nurse, realizing that it's very, very, very difficult to get the resources and referrals for adolescents, but also for adults, for seniors, for everybody, and to get the resources and the referrals to appropriate mental health professionals quickly. And with this service, this, that you can get a referral usually within two weeks of the call to MSP interface. And we started the program here in Littleton on February 1st, 2013. And so it had been in existence five months when we received our first report, and I think everybody has that. And then realizing that I was going to be coming, I talked with people at MSP Interface for a update from the time of that report until September 18th, I believe, plus. And so we have both of those. I don't know whether you want me to highlight anything or not on that report, or?
I think if you just give a general thoughts on it, I don't think we need to go through number by number, but if you want to just tell us what you've found and how helpful it's been and what you consider a success would be good to hear.
In our opinion, See a New Son, and also in talking with school personnel, it has been a very, very helpful and useful tool for them to be able to get services for kids who are in need of mental health services, and as well as parents who have called in, have received services through them. And we have had, as you can see on the report, there have been some adult callers who also received help. So in my opinion, and I hope in everybody else's, I think it's working, and I think it will continue to work even better as people get to know more about it and to use it and to call that phone number. And so as you can see, the numbers, between February 1st and June 30th, we have three more calls from the Littleton schools. The largest one being from the middle school, which would not be a surprise, because that is the age group that is really a tough, tough time of their lives. And also, as you can see on here, other schools, those would be schools, the school have students from town. So that's, I just wanted to be sure that you realize that.
Okay.
And as you can also see, parent calls are 24, school staff, three, self-referrals, four.
Oh, okay.
And so I think that was on the original report, and then in the secondary, this next one, it came, that was from that, from June 30th until September 18th, there were five more parent calls. And I know that there's a self-referral call. And you can see the numbers there, I mean, I think it is, it is doing good work. You can see what the referrals on that before, two for ADHD, two for anxiety, two for depression, parenting support, which I think we all, as parents, can use all the support we can get. And social issues, and substance abuse, substance abuse is a big, a big issue that we all know. And substance abuse is one of those factors that many times leads to depression and suicide if people don't get the help they really need. And I'm not saying that we can prevent it or none, but it would be nice to think we have a source and a resource to go to, to at least prevent as many as we possibly can. We have Littleton as a safe place for everybody.
Great. What are you, what else can we do for outreach? Can we, what can we do to get the number of, out in front of more people? It seems that a lot of stuff's in the schools and the councils, but is it something now that we can get it? I know we at one point got a magnet, but I don't know if that went out to everybody in the town, or?
Didn't go to everybody, but I did pass them out. And also, we have these cards which can be put around everywhere, they have the numbers on them. Also, I've had a little blurb in the Littleton Independent ever since we got it, and I'm not sure if it came out last week, but I'm going to be sure that that gets back in there again if it isn't, hasn't been, because I think, and posters, I've put posters up in some of the grocery stores and the library, little flyers.
Yeah.
And word of mouth, people getting, having a good experience, and then passing that along, because parents and, anybody, you don't have to be a parent, talk about these things to each other if they feel comfortable. And to be able to pass the word along that, yes, you can call this number and you'll get the help that you need. And the people that answer the phone are social workers, so they're not just any old, you know, they're not just somebody like me answering the phone, it's somebody that knows the business and knows what people's symptoms are, they can put things together and get them set up with the appropriate.
Yeah. Great. Okay. Sounds good.
We've talked a lot about this.
Yes.
And I saw applaud your work. It is just tremendous work. And the kinds of things that this program tries to help are things that are sort of out of the mainstream, not, not really seen. And if, you know, if I look at these numbers, you know, we've saved more than one life. And we've helped people with tremendous anxiety. And the, and the mental health services that are available to people now are difficult at best. And this, this is, I just like this program. It's easy to get involved in it, you get the referrals, and anybody that's in healthcare management knows that referrals like this take a long time to get, if you can get them. This is just a tremendous program. I support it very much.
So I'm Steve Bosniewski, my wife Deb, we live in the town of Groton, but we're Board members for See a New Son as well. And I guess one thing that I should, I'd like to add from what Barbara told you, is that SANS has provided a two-year contract for this.
Right, yep.
So it started in February of 2013, it'll end in January of 2015. And at that point, we're hoping that the funding of this will be picked up by Public Funds, through the School District of the Town. So as you prepare now for the 2015 budget, probably just to get rolling for that, we're hoping that you would consider adding this thing to the town budget as well. It's a $10,000 a year cost, not inexpensive, I realize budgets are tight, but we think the money's well worth spending. As I mentioned, you know, SANS raised the money privately for the first two years, kind of as a gift to the town. I'm also, Deb and I also have our own organization up in Groton, we've provided to Groton and Dunstable, and also Aaron Shirley. And Groton has now added it into their 2014 budget, and they're going to be picking it up as well. So we think, it was in a variety of towns around, too, Chelmsford, Westford, Harvard, Concord Parallels. So this is a service that is really becoming a part of this area, and we hope that Littleton will see the value of it funded as well.
How do we go about getting a line item for that? Do we have to find a department to put under, or?
It's a Health and Human Services function, so I can allocate a line item for it. I've already kind of put a placeholder in the budget for it pending your vote.
And it's all prorated, if we're not starting, you know, fiscal year 15. So do we need a letter from them telling us to serve it, you know, some sort of contract to, so that we, you know, we need some sort of backup for that line, I would imagine?
Once we get the authorization, then it, we treat it like an assessment. It's participation in the program, you authorize it through the budget process annually.
Okay. But we should have something from them saying what they're providing and the fee and things like that, right?
To invoice.
Yeah. But, you know, some sort of upfront, and that's why I wanted to have Barbara here now, and I think it'd be a good idea to come back. And yourselves, obviously, you're welcome also, but to come back before town meeting and, you know, maybe the second meeting in April, something like that, let's try to put that on.
I brought a copy of the contract, if that would be helpful.
That'd be great. That would help.
Would I give it to you?
Sure.
This is the contract, it's in existence right now.
All right. Anything else from the public or the board? All right.
I have a question about the fund. It's $5,000 in our motion. Is it?
I mean, half a year fiscal year, January 2015, June 30th.
Half as a fiscal year.
Correct. And it would go up to the $10,000 next fiscal year.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to include $5,000 in the town's fiscal year 2015 operating budget request for town funding for the Littleton Interface Program.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. One question, Keith, do you, do we have any links on our website, too?
I'll make sure that.
Either through Health and Human Services.
Yeah, I'll make sure we're actually moving a lot of things around as we're getting to, ready to launch a facelift for the website.
Okay.
Something would be good in that.
Yeah. I'd also like to say that MSP Interface has a page on their website that is a Littleton page, and they would allow, you know, whatever the town feels is appropriate to put on that page regarding mental health services, or if somebody might, you might want to take a look at it, it's mspp.org. And then you click on Littleton.
Okay.
And you'll see what's there. And I haven't really added things because I haven't really talked to all of you about what would be appropriate to add.
what would be appropriate to add, but it would be a good thing to get that really good.
Maybe get Tina involved and...
Sure.
Yeah.
That'd be good.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we can turn it over to our friends at MAPC. For those who might be new to this, that's the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, who helps cities and towns with planning. And you're here to tell, to talk about...
Complete Streets.
And we have, there's a short PowerPoint presentation. Sure. Sure.
Well, just aim right at the chairman's office.
I also have a few hand notes.
Right, Jen?
Thank you.
You can put them next to you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do they link that up as well?
Yes, thank you. Move the call from the kitchen.
Yeah, I think it's a sexist idea.
Thank you.
Welcome to, pull the trigger figure as we go. Just as a preliminary, I'd want to indicate that the town of Littleton has been offered staff support from Metropolitan Area Planning Council to have their staff come and assist us with the development of the Complete Streets policy that Chris is about to talk about. We've briefed two of our other committees thus far, the Planning Board and the new Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Both have voted to recommend that the Board of Selectmen accept the offer of service, of staff support from MAPC. But before so doing, we thought it was important to give your briefing on what it involves and what we need to do at the end of the process, which is essentially adopt a Complete Streets policy that fits us and so that we could see sort of what we'd be getting into. But it appears to be very similar to some of the initiatives that we're already undertaking, and happy to have the MIPC invite us to participate. So, Chris?
Thank you very much. So, I'm just gonna spend a few minutes speaking about what Complete Streets are, as well as some related legislation that's pending right now that is relevant, and then we'll leave some time for your questions. So, Keith, sort of explain the background, but just to give a little bit more context where this came from, MAPC was awarded a grant, a federal grant by the CDC a couple of years ago called the Community Transformation Grant. This was a $1.6 million grant, and the goal of this grant is to help tackle sort of the causes of chronic, the root causes of chronic diseases, things like diabetes, cancer, heart disease, et cetera. There are sort of three broad areas that this grant is covering. One has to do with tobacco cessation programs, one is increasing access to healthy foods, and the third is the physical activity, which is where sort of the Complete Streets is driven from, increasing physical activity as part of your everyday sort of just life. So, a little bit, sort of what is a Complete Street? So, the broad definition is a Complete Street is one that is safe, comfortable, and accessible for users of all ages and all abilities. All ages kind of focusing on children's safety as well as elderly safety, all abilities, of course, including people of disabled population. And they also have a focus on multiple forms of travel. So, in addition to sort of the road focusing on cars, or the street focusing on cars, also thinking about the needs of pedestrians, bicyclists, if you have, for example, commuter rail or other types of transit, increasing access to these amenities. One point that I think is really important to make is that Complete Streets are intended to be context sensitive. So, what might be considered a Complete Street in a city, so on the example on the left, that's in, obviously, an urban environment where there's bike lanes, sidewalks on both sides, crosswalks on every side, that's appropriate for a city. What's appropriate for a rural community could be quite different. In some cases, it could simply just be a road with a wide shoulder that allows for people to walk or in bike comfortably. Within a city and town, Complete Streets are also meant to be context sensitive. So, in a downtown sort of retail district, what might be sort of considered a Complete Street there, you might want to have the sidewalks, maybe bike lanes if they fit, whereas in a residential area, it could be something as simple as just a sidewalk or some sort of pedestrian path on the side. Couple examples of probably what would not be considered a Complete Street. Here, really, the focus is the fact that there's a demand for pedestrians to cross there, and that you have no really safe way to do so. Another example where there is a bus stop way right along a gray green road, but there's no comfortable or easy way for the pedestrians to sort of access this stop. And this is sort of my favorite in terms of what is not a Complete Street, but when somebody in a wheelchair is able to get to onto the sidewalk, that's not a Complete Street. So, again, there's no sort of one definition of what is a Complete Street, but I'm just gonna sort of very quickly run through a couple of examples of potential elements that might be part of a Complete Street. Things again, like the curb cuts that are handicap accessible, having highly visible crosswalks, could be various types of street skate elements such as the benches, trees, trash receptacles, street lighting, having signals for time signals. And again, even if they already exist, are they appropriately timed so that somebody who maybe can't walk as quickly can get across the street and not feel rushed or feel like a car's gonna come down on them? And then, of course, having this, if you have sidewalks, are they in good condition and easily able to traverse? Bicycle amenities could be, there's a whole range of various things, such as, again, as I mentioned, it could be something like a wide shoulder, could be bike lanes, if it's a more sort of urban or downtown type context, could be what are called sharrows, shared lanes. Cycle tracks are typically more for an urban context, as well as just thinking about things like, are there bike racks where people can leave their bike? And then finally, in some cases, you might want to consider sort of traffic calming on a road. If there's a lot of pedestrians, there are certain ways to sort of reduce the speed limit safely while still maintaining the flow. So, it doesn't cause a driver much inconvenience, but it can drastically increase the safety of pedestrians. And there's a number of examples, from reducing the travel lanes, and some considered in some cases, to just narrowing lanes, which can slow the traffic as well as other elements. So, benefits, again, this is sort of being driven from the public health arena, really to sort of improving and increasing physical activity. The recommended physical activity level per day is 20 minutes, and that includes walking and biking. So, if somebody walks a half a mile, for most people, that's a 10-minute walk. So, if they walk to the store and come back, they just receive their recommended physical daily limit of activity. Also, things improving road safety. Then there are other aspects. I've done a lot of the studies that I've looked at in retail areas when streets undergo a Complete Streets sort of rehabilitation, it drastically increases the economic activity in the area. And things as well, if you are able to sort of walk or bike rather than hopping in your car, you can reduce your personal transportation costs by not needing as much gas, you can improve the environment, et cetera. And finally, there's this potential access, which I'll speak to in a minute, about the proposed Act of Streets legislation. So, I've been sort of talking about individuals, sort of what is a Complete Street, wanna just switch gears a little bit and talk about the policy. And the point of a policy, it's really about the mindset, it's about sort of the high-level direction, making sort of incremental changes. So, for example, we are working with communities on bike ped network plan, and our recommendation is that when these various streets come up for their repaving, if they were gonna do a shoulder, maybe they can just make it a little bit wider, and that shoulder can then become a bike lane. And the point is to achieve sort of long-term results here. Again, as I've been saying, it's not a one-size-fits-all design prescription, it's not a requirement that they will be bicycle and pedestrian facilities on every single road. The idea is more that you consider it for a road and whether it makes sense. And again, it's not only appropriate for cities. So, a little bit on this Act of Streets legislation, this is, the idea of this is to incentivize cities and towns to include Complete Streets elements in their roadway projects, reconstruction, repaving, redesigning, et cetera. What this will do is, cities and towns can apply for this if they have sort of jumped through a couple of steps ahead of time. There's a pot of money to draw from, the amount is still be proposed, but from what I've heard, they're looking at $10 million per year. One of the key components, though, for communities in order to access this money is to adopt a Complete Streets policy, and that's why I wanted to talk about this, because it's very much tied to accessing this funding. So, in terms of sort of where this is right now, on October 9th, there's going to be a talk and a workshop by Mark Fenton, who's sort of this guru in this intersection of public health and urban planning. He's gonna be speaking to legislators and the public, he can have a very, at least, Act of Streets legislation as well as zoning reform legislation. And from what I've heard, they're looking to try and put this, include this in the Transportation Law Bill this year, and I obviously can't say for sure, but from my understanding, it seems like there's a highly likelihood that this will move through. And I've given contact information if anybody's interested in speaking more with somebody. So, just to end it, I think the idea would be, if the board decides that this is an initiative to move forward with, then, as Keith said, we would help craft a policy that's appropriate for Littleton, and then if that passes, then the thought would be to possibly consider the creation of bylaws, because of course, a bylaw might have more teeth than a resolution, but that's obviously not required. That's just sort of more on the one day chart. I think that's it. I'm happy to answer some questions.
Thanks, Chris.
Shut the light off.
I have a question.
Board members, any questions?
So, you would be acting as a consultant to, or whomever would be acting as a consultant directly to the town to be using different software programs and whatnot to help us figure out what we have and what might make sense to be changed or warped into to promote these healthy lifestyles?
No. This initiative is to us to, I'm sorry if I wasn't clear, is to act as a consultant to help create the policy.
Oh, I see.
Now, MAPC does provide technical assistance in terms of, but that would be a separate sort of initiative. For example, we've worked with some towns in this area, Hudson, Marlborough, Stowe, on bike network plan, which is exactly what you had said. The decision for which towns we'll be working with this year, this coming year, will be made, I believe, sometime this month. And I know I'm not going to make that decision, but I do know that my boss is very interested in working with the towns that are interested in actually receiving this. We don't want to sort of do this work and then hand a report if nothing's going to be implemented. So, Hudson, for example, has been a great partner, they've already had, we haven't even brought out the final report, and they've already put in a couple miles of bike lanes based upon our recommendations. So, that is separate, but it's absolutely something that MAPC could consider working with Littleton.
And when you say that Hudson's already put in a couple of miles worth of bike lanes, was that funded from this $10 million? No, it was self-funded, town-funded.
Yeah, there's no, there's no funding yet available under this prospective program, but there could be.
I was in the same boat with it, as far as where we were going with this. So, I appreciate that question and clarification. Is it? Alex?
So, you talked about this certification program. Obviously, this is all just starting out, but is that apt to, if we get into this program, apt to lock us into certain design criteria, say we're doing roads over and stuff like that, and is it, can grants, are they then going to become contingent?
No. The way, my understanding, the way that the, that funding works is if you have, let's say, one specific road, and you say, we want to do this, we want to add sidewalks, then if it meets sort of the approval of whatever the requirements are, then you would be able to access from that funding. It wouldn't say, we want to be this street, a Complete Street, and they would tell you exactly what to do.
So, you don't see a day when, like, our state funding for road repairs and stuff like that would be, would have a requirement to follow this plan?
I do not see that. I mean, this is, this is a separate voluntary initiative.
Right. And that if you voluntarily become certified under, you know, under this program, then there's the potential, at this point, potential that there could be a dedicated state funding source for it. But really what it does, and in working with the various boards to develop policies which would get implemented, you know, in maybe a board selectmen's policy as it affects your, how you set priorities for the roadway improvement plan, that would be one expression. How the Planning Board adopts subdivision regulations could be another. It may or may not be something to put into a town bylaw that expresses that policy, but the idea is that we're looking at streets not simply as something that, as the way you get from one place to another in a motor, in your personal automobile, but that, but that, from a planning standpoint, you look at other, you know, at pedestrians, at bicyclists, at, you know, public transportation riders and others. And, you know, we're addressing pieces of those right now. We're looking at having some kind of a shuttle system that connects the commuter rail station with the rest of the world and including, you know, where the major employment centers are. The other thing that I think would also be well to note, the state has to go, has to abide by Complete Streets standards now anyway, it's a practical matter, although in our dealings with Mass DOT, you wouldn't necessarily know that, because we've had to request and do a lot of arm twisting, whether it's for crosswalks or sidewalks or whatever, but that, you know, it might, it might help to position us to, you know, and request that we make from the state from time to time.
So, I got a point to make too. So, you're gonna be working on policy and possibly bylaw, and we've had discussion previously with the Planning Board in regards to having a sidewalk fund. You know, there's, I know of other towns that surround us that have this sidewalk fund for subdivisions or, you know, a developer comes in and says, hey, this is what we want to do, and they say, okay, we can do that, but, you know, we want a 1,600-foot sidewalk, cost $10,000. Would ask that you give us the $10,000, put it in the sidewalk fund, to be dispersed for either, you know, the smart, it's not extortion, Complete Street policy, so that we can, we can have those.
It's extortion.
No, it isn't extortion. You want to do business, we gotta do business. Exactly.
It's not personal something.
And, you know, so, I just asked that, when you start sitting down with the Planning Board and developing a policy, maybe prior to getting out, we see a draft to include something like that, like in our sidewalk fund? I know we talked about it with the Planning Board.
Yeah, I think...
Yeah, I've always been on the radar for a little while, yeah.
Yeah, I think that sort of thing would be an important expression of how we could tailor a policy, and say, we want to put our money where our mouth is here and to address those issues, because it, you know, it does become harder and harder. This project grew out of something that the Council on Aging went after, that our Director of Elder and Human Services first went after, a $5,000 grant that helped support the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and this is coming from the same funding source, the same grant that MAPC got, that they gave us $5,000 for that, to help with, you know, on the matter of wellness and helping people, including seniors who don't, you know, who don't drive and have to, you know, use other ways to get around. This, that's why, actually, it was that first grant that caused MAP to think of us the second time when this other staff assistance was available.
And there are many developers, developers, Mr. Chairman, that, you know, would be more than willing to know that if they can help out the town...
Oh, yeah.
...to give some money towards a great, you know, a Complete Street policy sidewalk fund, you know. What Sam Park does, IBM will do.
Oh, yeah. I've just worked at other places where it's just, we can talk offline, but what I have, my experience is just was not good with sidewalk funds, so if done right, I'm sure they can be helpful, you know. I think this is a recommendation by the Planning Board and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, so I think, you know, I think we should support their efforts. And, but can you get us a draft of a policy or another policy that you've worked on the town? Can you forward that to Keith for distribution, just so we can see what that...
Sure, yeah. We've got a sample from Plymouth, I think.
From Plymouth, and I've been working with other communities, home.
Yeah. Okay, great. You'll be glad to see us.
Yeah, I only need one. I don't know how many more.
Okay.
Okay. You have a motion?
Who's the Board of Selectmen vote in accordance with the recommendations of the Planning Board and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee? of the Planning Board and the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee to accept staff assistance from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council with funding from the Community Transformation Grant Program for the development of a, quote, "complete streets" policy, end quote, by the town of Littleton.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And move that the Board of Selectmen vote to support Senate Bill 68, House Bill 3091, relative to active streets and health communities, which proposes to create special funding opportunities for communities which adopt complete streets.
I move in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you very much.
See you again.
So we have a something scheduled for eight o'clock, so I really want to wait till eight o'clock for that to make sure that everybody, anybody planning on attending to be here. I'd like to jump down to staffing vacancy review. And there's two of them, or three of them. Bonnie, if you want to take, start with, let's see, police dispatch.
Sure. Last, the last meeting that we had, we had a request to hire a communications officer, frontline communications officer. We've since met with the police department and we're requesting a revision to that vote in order to hire a communications supervisor. It's been our practice in the past to promote from within, to elevate one of the officers up to the supervisor's position. But at this time, with the staffing changes, there isn't a qualified candidate or an interested candidate at this point. So we're, we're looking to hire basically what the department needs, which is the supervisor's position. And I'll let the chief elaborate, but I believe that we've reached agreement with the union to do this in this process. It's not an addition to the head count, it's just a change in, rather than hiring a communications officer, we hired a supervisor directly.
Okay.
It's a, as Monica said, it's not an addition or an additional position for title. Title position, it's something we've always had, but when Tim Venus left as our supervisor, we did not replace that position. Because of the constant rotation within that department, we thought that, actually, Matt Pernard came to us last Monday, the day, or two Mondays ago, when we were coming before you for a dispatch position, and said, "Hey, have you thought about trying to get a supervisor from outside?" Which is not allowed in the contract, but as you can see in the package that we gave you, we got a letter from the union stating that they concurred with that thought. So we thought Matthew's, Matt Pernard's idea had some merit, and we thought that we would try that initially and try to get someone that had, and then given an indication to himself and his current employer that he or she wanted to be a dispatcher as a profession instead of a stepping stone.
Okay.
So that's what we're hoping for. Then we will get someone that is already in the system, has the experience and expertise that we need, and we will be able to get them over to us.
And you said, "Try to do this." What happened, what do you see, does it working out, or something, you say, you want to try this?
Well, if, if we can't find someone to fill the supervisor position and the administrative needs of that position, we will go back and attempt to hire just a straight communications officer, which we can do by hiring a raw body and training that individual.
Okay. All right. Any questions, your colleagues?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Chief, the Personnel Board and Staff in the Town Hall recently drafted, it is a draft document for hiring practices and procedures. Would you be willing to follow that as the trial run on it?
Show it to me and I'll, I'll give my opinion after I see it.
Okay. Can you give them a copy?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't have electronic copies.
Is that going to be part of this?
I don't think it's necessary. I think if it's any type of draft document, if it has been accepted, I mean, what, that would be for a bylaw, or how would that come out, or a policy from there?
It's, it's a policy that we've been working on at the instruction of this board, actually, to accept, to, to prepare a uniform set of hiring practices.
I think if you want to take a look at it and see how it, how it fits into what you're doing, but if it's, if it's draft, it could change, so I don't think there's anything. I think if you would say, "Hey, we, this is what we did in compliance with this, this is what we didn't fit for us."
The first board came up with it and it obviously has.
Yeah, and, and has been, and drafted that document based on the fire department.
Well, certainly.
Nothing you haven't seen before, been doing for a long time. The fire chief came into the last Personnel Board meeting and offered comment to it, and he's in agreeance with it as well.
I'm sorry, I haven't seen it yet.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to amend its vote on September 16, 2013, where the police chiefs amended requests under the staffing vacancy review policy to fill a full-time benefited position for police dispatch communication supervisor.
Second.
I move in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Keith. Good luck. Council on Aging. Bonnie, are we expecting anybody to come into this, or?
I don't believe so. Basically, what the Council on Aging is looking to do is hire a part-time, on-call, marked van driver. Again, this would, would not add to the FTEs for the department, but we're looking to have somebody fill in during absences of their other part-time drivers. So it wouldn't add hours, it wouldn't add benefit eligible positions, they would just be filling in for the driver while they're on vacation or if they're sick. And there are qualifications that they need to go through to be marked certified, so it's important to kind of have them authorized on paper.
Okay. No, I just say, thank you, Bonnie.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to grant the Director of Elder and Human Services request under staffing vacancy review policy to fill a part-time, on-call, non-benefited position of a marked van driver.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. One more, Bonnie, here's the big one.
That's one's for me.
So this is for, unfortunately, for a chief assessor.
Chief assessor, yes. Ken Mildren, you know, to my, my deep sadness is informing me that he's going to be retiring as of December 30th, which thankfully will get me through the tax classification hearing for this year and new growth and the things that I need to do to set the tax rate for this date. It's going to be important that we get somebody on board fairly quickly. Next year is a reval year, which is a lot of work. Ken has agreed to assist us through, you know, January, February with the abatement process as an aside, but he really wants to be done, you know, as of December. So we're looking for authorization to replace this position. The other thing that's going to be important as part of this is that, you know, I probably will have some retirements coming with the administrative staff probably thereafter, probably a year or so, so. Yeah.
Okay. This is a big position, too.
It is. Very important.
What is, what is the steps? Is this, is there a committee? I know for some of the bigger positions, we have committees.
Yes, actually, we're going to, we're going to have a committee that would be made up on, I'm going to work with the Board of Assessors because the appointment is subject to the Board of Assessors and myself. But I, you know, I talked with them unofficially, I'm going to be meeting with them on the 10th to go through an official, you know, review of the process that we'd use. But what I'm recommending is that we have a committee, a screening committee set up that would include like Steve Anudie, myself, Ken Mildren, two members of the Board of Assessors, so that we have a quorum. And then we could go through and review the applications that we receive, figure out what ones we want to interview, and then send up the recommendations to the full Board of Assessors and myself for public interviews. So, you know, I think, I threw that out to the Board of Assessors and they were initially comfortable with it, but we're going to go through it formally on the 10th.
When did we hire Ken? When was the last time I went through this?
2005.
Yeah, 2005, okay. And been through this process specifically, okay.
And this is similar to the process that we use for the Director of Elder and Human Services.
Yeah, and the idea with a, having a sort of a search committee with less than a quorum of the board, that's step one, is so that you can have confidential interviews at that level, because it may make a difference if you've got a good candidate who is not ready to announce publicly his or her potential to leave where they are. You can, if it looks like that they might make it as a finalist year, then, then we give them the opportunity to, you know, either pull out or stay in and participate in a public interview in the second round.
Alex? Anything?
Yeah, I have the same comment, but you know, you know exactly what the policy says. You've been part of developing it, are already following it, so I have the same stance. It's an important position, and we've got, we've got to get this policy right.
Okay. Anything else, any other wonders?
Miss Ken?
Yeah.
Teaches me every year.
Yeah, I don't, you get the refresher.
Yeah, we get the refresher course.
Let's see, I think we'll do that, right, Steve?
Steve, oh.
We can tell you now what the answer is.
Sorry.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to grant the request of the Assistant Town Administrator Finance Budget and the Board of Assessors under the staffing review policy to fill a full-time benefited position of chief assessor.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Steve?
Get a quick assessor.
All right, let's see. Do you want to, I think everyone's put here, do you want to do minutes, mark off minutes? Anyone have comments on the minutes for September 16th and September 9th?
All right. For, any comments on the 9th? Make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes for Monday, September 9, 2013.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yeah, well said, Pam. Sorry, you won't watch it on TV?
I was watching on TV. It made, it made.
No.
He jumped the schedule.
Yeah.
There's nothing else for me on the schedule, Wes.
Nice seeing you.
Yeah, thanks for coming in.
Medical marijuana, I think.
All right. Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Board of Selectmen Minutes Meeting, Minutes for Meeting on Monday, September 16th, 2013.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. I think that's about all we can take care of. It's almost eight o'clock, and I think almost everybody's here now. So we'll move on to eight o'clock agenda item, which is a fiscal year 24, 2014 budget update and a fiscal year 2015 budget planning. Joint Committee with Finance and School Committee, would you like to come into session?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman. You're in session, okay.
Let's move on from front.
Yeah. Mark, come on, front, so.
Front queue or something.
Chuck, come on right in.
I'll tell you who might be around. School committee, it's a board of, saying.
He's always smiling.
What are you saying under your breath?
You have a phone now?
I still get it.
I didn't hear what you said.
He's always in the second row.
Interesting.
Yeah.
I'm no longer chair, but I can sit in the second row, that's right.
He knows how to avoid, avoid that. School committee, you have a call?
We're okay, though.
Okay. Okay. So I'll turn this over to Bonnie or Keith, but really, we would, just what we said, we want to talk about 2014 and 2015 planning and goals.
Great. I'll just give you initially just the update on 2014. As I mentioned before, we are in balance. We're going into town meeting with a couple of budget adjustment articles and some additional capital items, but we are essentially in balance. We have a small surplus of $226 that remains that will stay there.
That's what I was thinking, right?
And, and again, this is just from the annual town meeting that we went into, we left out of balance by about $97,000, who were the result of state aid figures coming in in final format, or final format. We're now in balance. So for the fiscal 2015 budget planning, I'll just go through the scenarios that we're looking for from the departments and some of the assumptions that we're using in the documents at this point. And again, it's all preliminary and very early in the planning stages. We're looking for two different budget scenarios, level, level staffing, which would be the same staffing levels as fiscal 2014, no increases in body counts or FTEs. The only thing that would be, including a step increases if they are due, no colas. And expenses leveled funded at the 2014 level. And then we're looking at a mission budget or a goal budget, which would be what the department head feels or the board feels is the service level that they need in order to provide the best service to the, to the residents. I'm not saying that we'll be able to support that level in any manner, but it's nice to be able to see what that would look like, so that if there are some funding opportunities that become available, you'll be able to identify what you might see as a priority. So as far as the budget instructions, they'll be going out to the departments tomorrow, starting tomorrow, and that we do that by the end of October, so that I can prepare them for the November hall board meeting. And in the projections, we're looking at some very conservative revenue projections for the town for fiscal '15. We're looking at a 1% increase in local receipts, which would includes excise, department fees, permit fees, 0% in school state aid and in municipal state aid, so that would be chapter 78 and general municipal aid. New growth is a little bit more aggressive than in prior years because of the projects that we have coming online, so I need to work with the chief assessor to kind of tweak these numbers and make sure that they seem reasonable in these projections, but we're holding them so far.
You have a question? You want a question now, or?
Go ahead.
15 Great Road included in those?
15 Great Road and the Sam Park project.
Is that something we should reconsider? 15 Great Road, just?
That's, it's something that we need to monitor for permits, so, yeah.
Yeah, okay. That's my only warning, is that? Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're eyeballing that one.
Okay, thank you.
And in the expense category, we're looking at approximately a 2.6% growth in town department budgets, which is primarily made up of the step increases. No, again, no cola is factored into the operating budgets. We're looking at a 0% increase in operating expenses. We've averaged a 2, 2.6% growth in the school appropriation, starting in fiscal 2016. The reason that we started that in 2016 is because the 2014 budget assumed the inclusion of an additional step, that third step. So it's built in, so if you carry it forward into '15, you don't necessarily need that there. So that's the rationale behind when we started in '15. But again, we know that this is, this is the starting point of the process, but I think it's important to just identify that. As far as fringe and employee benefits, I took a five-year rolling average and averaged it out at 11.2%. It's just, it's just an average, it's not stating that the premiums will go up that much, or, you know, the retirement, that's what will, it's just a good rolling average at this point. We don't usually firm those numbers up until April, so we're keeping an eye on those also. Using those, again, conservative assumptions, structural deficit appears in '15, starting at about $235,000 and continuing through '19 at 2.1 million. So, you know, bridging that gap in a sustainable fashion can only be accomplished by increasing the revenue or controlling expenses. Looking for additional revenue sources.
Just, just one question on the healthcare.
Sure.
With Obamacare coming online, what's the impact? Has anybody talked about that, or?
We're going to be working with Maya, you know, through that. As you can see through the OPEB study that we just had done, you know, the, the actual OPEB number increased by almost 4.4 million, just shy of 4 million. And I think Steve would prefer that I point out that just a 1% variance on the assumptions can make that $36 million figure go to 45 million. So just 1% off on the assumptions can make a huge impact. So it's, it's something definitely that needs to be monitored. The other thing that I would just point out is that, you know, it becomes imperative going forward in negotiating additional collective bargaining agreements in the outward years, that we make sure that we do the analysis that we've been doing on long-term impacts, not just wages, but benefits, time off, sick time, vacation time, accruals, everything else needs to really be reviewed before the contracts are executed and approved. So we, we want to make sure that we continue that practice.
Town side's all set for fiscal 2015, right?
Correct. Yes.
2015?
As far as contract negotiations, yes, yeah.
Yep, we have agreements in place.
Which, all right, one's tomorrow, the subject was school. When is school?
They're in negotiations now, right?
Next year? Next year?
So, I did provide the, again, the summary document showing the fiscal review for the next five years, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Glady on the financial policies update. Do you want to go through that, or do you have anything?
Yeah, it was easy for me to follow what's going on with on my black right here. You might have noted in the memos that Bonnie sent and that I had sent, we didn't collaborate, but I think the message was very much the same, and that, you know, we're not quite sure whether it was a bad year, that we're, you know, we've all been anticipating, you know, when exactly that's going to hit, and, you know, the reality of expenses, particular expenses, even when it's as low as 2.6% growth in employee costs, our revenue growth is just so stagnant that it's not far off when those lines cross. And as you just asked, Mr. Chairman, that all the high-profile development that we, you know, hear of and see so prominently is all incorporated into the models. So, that's, you know, that's the reality. I think sometimes in people's minds, they've spent that money two or three times over, and the reality is that's just helping us tread water, so that's...
And may not... May not come to fruition.
Right. So, you know, the... We hope you'll, you know, take some time to reflect on that, and then at the point where Selectmen identify your priorities in the budget process, please be mindful that the decisions on individual spending items or decisions that can affect revenue flow both matter greatly. If you don't mind, maybe I'll just remind them of a couple of dates on the budget calendar since we're here, although if you've got it handy, you might be able to build it out better. We are starting out earlier, you know, we're kind of continuing on last year's process. We're actually going a little earlier on that. That's only worth doing if the... If it yields benefits and... Thank you. If we're... We're able to do it in a meaningful way, and I think it's fair to say that we're comfortable enough in enough of the numbers that there is value in doing it earlier. So, for dates that are important, I think, for us communally, between School Committee, Selectmen, FinCon, you know, it's kind of an intensive part of the schedule now through October, November. You'll see there's a couple more joint meetings anticipated for specific causes. One, I think is...
Collective bargaining?
Yeah, the collective bargaining, which I guess we're looking at maybe middle of October, Keith, is that kind of the...
I think it's the 24th.
Oh, is that the date? Okay.
The School Committee has meetings on the 10th and 24th.
We had a week earlier than that, another joint session, which is when Bonnie, you're planning on doing kind of the State of the Town.
Correct.
The high-level numbers that she just profiled for you every year, she does a terrific job, informed largely by Stephen Odey and Ken Overton's work, as well as her own, and that'll be, I think, on the 15th?
Tuesday, the 15th.
Tuesday, the 15th. Now, the other dates in the month of October that are... You might want to be aware of is that during that month, that's when the FinCon will be doing our business with departments. We did have a kickoff session within a couple of weeks ago, and I'd like to cover a couple of the points that came up interestingly at that session. I'd also throw it out there that, you know, it wasn't too many years ago, and Selectmen would do a similar thing, and if you guys... You know, what we do is we just kind of divvy up the departments and go around and see them for a little session, talking about what's going on, the current operations, what's projected, you know, likely changes, trend lines, you know, what we can use for good metrics to try to determine what the needs are over time, that sort of thing. We get value out of it, even though they, at that point in time, when we're going out there in October, they're... They're not required to have their budget proposal done yet. It's probably even better to be talking to them at that point, because I think it's, what, the end of October, Bonnie, when you look for it?
End of the 30th.
Yeah. So, on the... I think it's the 15th or 16th of October is when we'll be looking to come back again and visit you, and hopefully you'll be talking to us more than us talking to you in terms of what your priorities are. At that point, budget process is already underway, but it's not too late in the game to reflect Selectmen input, and I encourage that strongly. So, that's... That will also happen on the same night when Bonnie will be giving her presentation. The all-day session with all the departments, we're doing, as Bonnie alluded to earlier, we're doing it a little bit earlier this year, which is terrific, and I know that's been the, you know, it's a period of time with a lot of things going on that her office has to focus on, so we appreciate making that earlier date happen. First week in December was kind of a busy time, busy day, and we're tired, I think it's the, what's the 16th?
16th.
Yeah. There'll be plenty of Java, because we generally, well, we did it last year at the police station, so we encourage you to come and spend as much of the day as you want. Seeing all the departments explain their mission and their specific requests in kind of a snapshot picture personally, I just found much more valuable than seeing them staggered periods over, over the course of two, three months where, you know, things changed, trends are lost, et cetera. It was a particularly good session. So, if you follow that, we're looking to be close to having a lot of the pieces of the budget in place, you know, not long after Thanksgiving. So, I guess, you know, we're here to ask you to get involved in establishing your priorities and getting as, you know, hands-on as you find it appropriate with the depart... Your own departments especially, so that we, you know, when we make these decisions jointly, you know, they're informed. Briefly hit on the four items, I assume you all got a copy of the memo that I had sent that... There were four topics that came up when we dealt with all the department heads, that it's as much, I suppose, for the finance department as it is for you to consider, but I think jointly, we need to kind of relook at maintenance issues, both building maintenance right out of trash collection, it's kind of handled differently from different departments, and then vehicle maintenance specifically, that issue came back to us. And once again, the particular issue is it's not a universal approach to it, so looking at that is to see whether there's potential savings from dealing with it on a universal level is something we suggest we ought to do at the outset of this budget cycle. Cross-departmental issues, oh, that's been a chronic issue, and I think the best way to solve it is just to ferret out as much of it as we can early in the process. It usually involves the highway department, because everybody who comes up with a project that they haven't figured out how to do, or who's going to do it, it lands in their lap, so, you know, I think Jimmy has been terrific about dealing with that, and it's just... It's helpful to know as early in the process what's going to be expected of them. Sometimes it's a capital project involving the schools, sometimes it's park and rec, some of the physical work that goes on there, but, you know, then there's kind of an equity issue, whose budget should some of those things come out of? So, we were asked, and we're complying and getting that on the table early on. The other feedback we got had to do with the specifics scheduling in the budget session, and I think, you know, experience will teach us that you can't be probably so slotted into exact times, not knowing how things are going to run, or at least we'll benefit from last year's session, not have people in a position where they either show up and have to wait an hour and a half if they don't want to, or we're sitting waiting a half hour because we, you know, we got through something quicker than expected. Prioritization, again, I just ask you to take Bonnie's memo to heart and, you know, try to see how that, you know, affects your own thinking in terms of what programs are most important to you and within departments and programs, what are the most effective ways to deliver the services, you know, the most cost-effective way. Final topic we wanted to touch on, and I'll just hit it briefly, if you wanted to stick to budget topics, I was going to mention the financial policies update. Would you pleasure, Mr. Chairman, whether you want to stick to FY '14 budget stuff, or...
Yeah, let's stick to that for now, and we can go to policies.
Yeah.
We can tackle policies in another meeting.
Okay. So, I'm not sure if members have anything to add on that.
The only thing I'd say is that when we had all the departments in, we had uniform approval of the all-day meeting. Getting people to say that they're not taking it was a good thing, was kind of surprising for people. I mean, it wasn't just us who benefited from seeing everybody all together. And going to the vehicle maintenance, we... There really was a sense that there were the possibility of some substantial savings by having, you know, all the vehicle maintenance done together somehow, just something to look at.
Okay. Chris?
No, nothing.
Mr. Gray? I see, I see, yeah. Chuck? Alex? Kelly? So, I guess my question to you is, well, the thing we want to talk about is priorities. We talked about that last year, and that was one of, you know, things I was trying to get out to you, too. You know, what are you looking for? Because usually it's kind of cart before the horse. We got to, you know, do we have to get the request in before we give you our priorities, or are we looking at... You look at some sort of guidance now?
Well, we're looking to come back...
Give us the guidance on the guidance you're looking for.
Yeah, well, we're looking to come back in a month, or meet again in a month, whether it's here or, you know, at School Committee or RB, or whatever it is. And at that time, say, last year, I mean, a budget priority that you guys, at the time of all guys, the board had promoted was the fire department, and that was a very specific need driven by a specific program change driven by a specific need. That's the kind of thing. I'm not saying come up with new expenditures, per se, but if there are things you want to accomplish, it's about the budget.
What I see is if there's competing interests, is what, do you want some sort of guidance?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's at a bare minimum. I mean, ideally, going forward, it'd be good to know what the prioritization is, even when times are good, so it becomes a little bit easier to implement, you know, cuts or changes in program if the times go sour. So, I mean, that's the reality we haven't had to face yet. So, when we ask you for priorities in years gone by, recent years anyways, it's usually been satisfied by, you know, being able to fund the first couple of items on the list, and it hasn't got into the territory of, here's where we make the pain, you know, apply. But that, knowing what... How it all works out in terms of, we'd like to see increased dollars or attention spent here, and if we have to achieve savings, here's where we like or think they can be achieved. Maybe like is not the appropriate word, but where we think we can achieve them.
And I think part of this is, part of our approach was looking at metrics, trying to look at metrics based. So, looking at the various departments, seeing, you know, where are they relative to where they want to be, and then where is each of the departments? Where is their mission, you know, relative to the town? So, I mean, just for example, maybe we always think more on the roads, and then we think, you know, okay, you know, if we got some extra money, you know, where are the roads and, you know, where do you guys... We all think the roads are relative to the mission of the various departments, just a big one.
Okay. Thanks.
Part of that actually is going to, I think, can better be done by the board when we actually see what all the requests are from the various departments, because we've got them right now working on operating and capital requests. Some things we can sort of know and predict, but other things we may not have seen fully yet, and we'd like to have the opportunity to look at that whole picture. And we've been talking about operating budget, but there are some expenses that show up on the capital budget as well that can have a significant impact. For, just as one example, it's a goal of this board, and we raised it with the Planning Board, that we should update the master plan. It hasn't... We haven't had it updated since 2002. It caught... To do a bad job with master plan, you need at least $100,000. To do a good job, you need, you know, twice that or more.
And spend it wisely.
Yeah, and so, if it is something that we want to address, one way to find expression is to put it in a budget request for next year, and we ought... And, you know, being able to undertake something like that, just as an example, you've got... There are other trade-offs with what you can't do.
You took the words out of my mouth. The... Some things neatly fall into departments, you know, budget, you know, and they'll generate their requests, but I would... I think it's important for the Selectmen to kind of think globally, and there are certain items, such as master plan, which, for want of a better word, sort of budget orphans, unless...
Yes, it is.
Unless you guys adopt it, or if you have other similar initiatives that don't neatly fall into a department, you know, speak now or have a whole...
Right, I mean, and we can start by just taking a... Looking at the list of goals you have and then putting, you know, seeing which ones translate to budget requests with dollar amounts attached to them, so...
This kind of places in my hand where I was going with this is cap plan. Do we have a number on the cap plan yet? Where we're at is increasing from last year. I know we don't have the request in yet, but did you look at that at all?
I mean, I've looked at it. It's, you know, well over a million. It's probably sort of 2 million for this fiscal year.
Okay.
The draft from last year, so we have to refresh that.
Okay. So, you haven't drove down that far yet?
Three million, I think, you know.
Yeah. You can see a smile when we mentioned cap plan, though.
If it had a same prioritization within the cap plan, is probably something we need to fine tune a lot better. I mean, we do a lot of things real well. I think that we probably haven't developed a process that is equitable on that level. Sometimes, you know, you put money on the table, and you have lesser needs in that particular year, you know, you're buying things that you, on a different year, may not buy because of the availability, and vice versa.
There's no easy way to do it.
Well, but we could, I think, we could improve that process.
And I'll be saying, you're going to make everybody happy, but, yeah.
That's a good one. That part's a good one.
But also, and just for policy, how much can be put into the cap prioritization fund? I mean, that's a policy-driven thing.
Yeah.
Or that should be a policy-driven thing.
Well, that gives you an opportunity to even out those hillings.
Yeah.
You have extra money, you don't have that, spend it this year, put it away in that fund and spend it next year when you know you're going to need that.
Right. Alex?
I think the point about the master plan is a good one, and we've put a lot of emphasis in that, and yet it is a big investment to do it. So, I think we, as a board, have to talk about how that is, understanding that somebody else, you know, is going to go without if we do a master plan. But my biggest level of concern of the whole budget, you talked about it a little bit with dealing with a single point of vehicle maintenance and also a single point of building maintenance, is we look back at Steve's report that he gave us and the OPEB liability, and we look at the cost-driving factors that we have in the budget, they're all related to personnel. And I am not a fan of choking out the existing personnel we have now with, you know, limiting pay and benefits. We have good people, and we should support them. But I am, and I've been this way since the beginning, we owe no obligation to anybody who's yet to come. And we should think long and hard about any position that we would want to create, because it is adding that liability on, plus all the increases that come with it. So, with that, I go back to another one of the things that I've talked about. We need to look at where we can... Look at ways of regionalizing or reducing the cost of these services to us with respect to our biggest points of liability in employment. So, with that, I would suggest that we look again at a regionalized dispatch effort. There have been two that have been put online recently, since the last time we discussed about that. We probably need to take a look at those and understand at what point it becomes viable for us, and any other place that we can look at ways that we're sharing those liabilities with somebody else, because we simply can't afford to just keep adding people. We've done a really good job. The finance team has done a really good job at pushing that year out, we were going to face the crisis, and it almost looks like it's getting further out. The day of doom and gloom is a little more breathing room. So, when we look at problems like this, I mean, we have to start the discussion, and we have to look at it seriously. Do we solve them all this year? Probably not. But if we're going to find our way away from the doomsday, then I think we have to give that kind of thought to all our budgeting.
Chuck?
The comment I have right now is that I think Keith brought up is that, as a board, we have to carefully examine all our goals to see what our goals will actually cost, maybe we might have to change our priorities there, too.
Chuck?
My time with Mr. Milligan was very informative, and in looking at some of the charts and whatnot, while we can claim as a municipality that we have gone from almost 84% of our tax levy being provided by the residents back in 2007, and it's dropped down to about 78%, that is a percentage of a pie, and the pie has gotten bigger, because we were at $12,000, I mean, $12.07 back in '07, and now we're up to $16.98 per thousand. So, as I mentioned some time ago, I am a fiscal New Englander, and I think we need to stop spending money on things that we have options on, and I think that's very much driven by this board choosing whether or not to insert things into the article, into the warrant articles, which have a cost associated with them. So, that's my two cents for now.
Sounds good.
I'm going to round it up to 70.
I just have a question for school. I know there were some issues with some of the forecasting. How's fiscal year 14 working out, and have you met with the LEA, any preliminary meetings at this point?
Guess I'm the chosen one.
We saw Stephen.
We have met with him. As you all know, when you go into collective bargaining, you start at square one. So, that's the approach we're taking.
And your contract's up next year?
Yes, it's the last year of our current contract.
Okay. How's this year's budget looking as far as moving forward, with any unexpected costs that you've seen come up so far this year?
Not that we were aware of.
Okay.
There were a few things. When you forecast so early, your predictions sometimes aren't as accurate as you'd like them to be, and we've managed to absorb... We've managed to absorb the surprises, so to speak. We don't have any new surprises.
So, 14's looking okay so far this year? Okay. Moving forward to 15, I think the, what the finance committee has done with the, that long day of sitting down, I think it is very beneficial. And I think for the department heads to hear what everybody's going through for a whole total town perspective is pretty cool too. And hopefully this year we can get it on TV so folks can actually take a look and see how exciting that is.
Let's do a telethon.
For the 300th, we can work something in there.
Get a different bandage.
But that is, that is a, that is a good thing. And that's a nice step that the finance committee put together last year, so.
All right. Any closing arguments?
Well, just as I say, we do want to speak a little bit to the revised financial policies, which I believe you have a copy of. That's a consensus document from your boards, Jim Carr participated, Mike Fontenella from the school committee, myself and Chris Hinckley from FinCom as well as Bonnie and Steve, Steve Manuti, who we've been meeting off and on since, I guess, probably May is when we started. Well, initially we tackled, you know, the stuff we knew we had to get in there just to keep it updated and current. The document is, you know, as good as it is, you know, town's finance policy primarily proven over the years by Bonnie and Steve, or, you know, it's good or better than any other, you know, town, or most other towns, I should say. But there's a couple of the models which we're paying attention to that we might want to emulate in some ways. But in any event, they've stood us well. But, you know, that's part and parcel why we want a double dollar. We want selectmen to become more aware of them. We want all the, you know, players to keep it a bit more in the forefront. I think it's fair to say that all the people internal to the finance team know what's in there and they pay attention to it as we, you know, do business on a day-to-day basis and plan for years. But we started and we did incorporate language to reflect some policies we commonly worked on in terms of OPEB, also the creation of the capital stabilization fund. We need the language there to do that. There was some other updated language in the proposal you have before you, but largely we stayed away from either new ideas that we hadn't fully vetted out. There's a lot of different finance-related topics that either is boilerplate language for at the GFOA, you know, website that we're looking at, a couple of other towns, you know, put, address topics that we don't address. So, we're kicking that around. I think it was fair to say this was safely on the back burner until the whole, you know, impact of financial policies on a couple of war knuckles for the fall brought it front and center. Well, we do think it's important that the boards reaffirm and adopt the policies that had been practiced. And we want to, I think, some of the new language specifically spells out that it will be done annually to kind of keep it current in everybody's mind so that new participants to the process don't walk in and say, well, what's this document? Somebody voted it three years ago and I had nothing to say about it. You know, so we're going to guarantee that every, every new iteration of the relevant boards gets a chance to address it. I mean, it may well be that we're just reaffirming policy from year to year without change. That's fine if that's, you know, if that's where we go. But we, you know, we do want to have, you know, an affirmative vote on policies by the boards involved sometime in the next, I guess you guys, your policy is to hear about a proposal and then vote at a subsequent meeting. That's fine, but, you know, we get the budget process kicking off and we've got the special town meeting coming up in November and especially on the items that are already in the existing policy, we'd like to see votes on those. And obviously a dialogue if there are questions you have on it or suggestions. And then the second half of it is just this, that the other topics, the working group's going to continue to work on as time allows and we'll bring back pieces of it as they, you know, as we come up with proposals we think are ready for the, for the selectmen, FinCom, schools may consider.
They're very exciting meetings.
Jim does come, I've been hanging with him.
Chuck?
Just on behalf of the school committee and I believe I can speak with the school partners as well, I just want to say thank you very much for all the effort that everybody's put forth. A lot of appreciation. The inclusive collaborative environment that's been created and it's been very productive.
Yeah. Great. Nice to hear it. Thank you for here. All right.
So, I don't know if she has to look over that language or, I assume the new stuff had been bolded out, is that right, Steve?
Yeah.
Okay. So, if there's something there you want to question or have a question on, speak now or you can bring up one of the topics.
All right. When's your next meeting?
Our next meeting? We meet of the subcommittee or the FinCom?
FinCom.
FinCom, we're meeting on, two weeks from tonight?
Okay.
No, we're not, we're not meeting on the 18th.
We should probably.
Yeah, well, we discussed that.
For the.
We have the agenda for our next meeting.
For the priorities or?
We have to accept it. And we can have comment and discussion there.
Yeah, 15 is our next.
Vote on it. For their meeting, actually, it'll work out nice.
All right.
So, our next meeting, let's accept it, have discussion.
We'll have a discussion and we're going to amend or make recommendations.
Then we can actually vote it on the 15th when these guys are meeting again and they'll have something to.
So, we'll put, we have a meeting on October 7th, we're going to, so we'll put a matter of adoption of those amendments on that.
If any questions come up in the interim, I hope Jim can speak to it.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, committee.
All right. So, moving on to the November 4th special town meeting. We did, the warrant did close, but there is a request to reopen the warrant because there was one, one potential article that came up that could be very important and very helpful in this town. And I, much as I like to keep things closed and finalize once they're finalized and not go back on things, I think this warrant's changing. And Keith, you can fill in the blanks, but basically it's a home rule petition to allow us to count our subsidized housing inventory longer than the state currently, or the state currently provides?
Yes, that's correct. And if I had identified prior to the close of the warrant that there was a home rule petition circulating out there with some other communities, I would have made this board aware of that sooner. I only found out about it last week during a series of meetings I had in Boston, tracking down what our next steps were for dealing with the housing production plan. And it was, and it was pointed out to me that the town of Norton has, has a hearing on a bill that will be heard next month by the Joint Legislative Committee on Housing, which is chaired by our state Senator Jamie Eldridge. And that the issue that they're dealing with is just right on point to what Littleton and many others face. And that is that when, once you get, for those communities that are above 10%, that you run the risk of falling back below 10% if a developer doesn't pull their building permits within one year. Right now, it's one year the way the law is written. The proposed amendment that Norton had, has submitted and the proposal is that we should file similar legislation would essentially extend that from one to three years. That is, that since the CBA permit is good for three years, the proposal is that, that the, the life on the subsidized housing inventory lasts for a similar duration. It looks like, there's no guarantee that such legislation would pass. What is clear though is that if more cities and towns are asking for that, that sort of remedy, then, then that could help create pressure for the state legislature to actually amend the general law to, to address that issue. But I think it would be an important fallback measure for us to have in place if we find ourselves in, in need of that, of that solution. And I, since our next opportunity to do, to file such legislation would be next May and we could be facing a situation before then, it seemed like it was proven for us to, to file this legislation sooner rather than later. So, I checked with town council, it hasn't been the practice here. I've done it in other towns on rare occasion. It has not been the practice here. But since the warrant's still in your hands and you haven't issued it to the council, you have the ability tonight to finalize its form by reopening the warrant, inserting the article thereon and then closing it. And then we can, and then we can have the council post the warrant tomorrow. I've worked in some communities where the town bylaw dictated how many days before town meeting a warrant had to close. In those cases, we wouldn't have had this opportunity. Frankly, I had that, we had an issue come up one year, we left an important article off the warrant, I had the selectman call a special town meeting for the same night.
Okay.
So, there was just, you had two town meetings that convene at the same hour, so you have all the subject matter there. There's no reason to do something like that here. You can just put it on the warrant.
Okay.
But I do think that, I do think that it would be more prudent for us to be advancing this issue now rather than wait till the spring.
This actually came up in one of our recent town meetings, I believe, with the same issue. And was it two years ago?
Regarding reopening, you mean, or regarding?
No, regarding having the ability to insert one of the articles to try and save some subsidized housing.
Now, how does that affect their permit though, their comprehensive permit?
It doesn't, not at all. That whatever, I mean, the, an applicant would have whatever they have, that they, whatever they've been granted. The only thing that it would change is how we get to count those units. And right now, the law is very strict that if, that if the developer doesn't pull building permits in 12 months, then, then we can see those permits falling off our subsidized housing inventory and not getting back on until, until the units are further advanced.
So, we could count them after he has, is able to build them? Because after his, his permit expires within 12 months?
No. No, 36 months, three years.
Well, what was the thing, he had to pull permits within 12 months?
Well, in order, in order, for our benefit, for his benefit, he has three years. So, the law gives him three years. For our benefit, that is to continue to count the units on the subsidized housing inventory.
Right.
We, if you will, we only have 12 months for him to do that.
Okay.
That's what the law says. And what we were looking to do was to follow the lead of some other communities that are looking to have a longer period of time. Because in essence, we don't have any control over when he pulls, when a developer pulls a building permit.
One other concern that I, I'd like to bring up in, in dealing with the home rule petition, these 40B projects, they have the ability to go beyond the actual comprehensive permit three, 36 months by.
Further extension.
A further extension. So, if there's a way that we can incorporate, just in case in three years, you know, we'll be looking at the same thing. So, if we can incorporate some language, I don't know if Norton has done that.
Yes, the language does read as, in essence, it says that for, for the term of the original permit or any extensions granted by the CBA.
Perfect.
Yeah. So, in essence, as long, and intuitively, it makes a lot of sense.
Yes.
That you would think that since the community has, has granted a developer a property right in his approval that has a longer, a long life, at least three years, it could be extended. We've got Kimball Farms on the Common, so-called now, that has, is in its second afterlife, you know, that it's been, that permit was transferred and the permit has been extended and it's still years and years.
But he pulled a permit, didn't he? Didn't he pull one permit for us to keep it on?
Enough. Well, then the next trigger is occupancy. So. Building permit, pull a building permit within 12 months, that keeps it on. And then there's a later deadline, I think another 18 months for occupancy. And if that doesn't happen, then it falls off, so.
So, would it make sense to incorporate the Kimball project also in our home rule petition?
We're, we're not naming names.
Okay.
But the.
Tom White, I like it. The.
Friday.
The, the terms would, would apply to anything that has been.
Yeah. And has town council got our petition written or we're just?
Yes, yeah, we're just, we've just cut and pasted Norton's. And town council did review it. And I, I talked with Senator Eldridge about this at length on Friday, explaining some of the frustrations with some of the administrative procedures that the town faces in, with this. And he was supportive of us going forward with this, that frankly, there's no reason not to. And even before the, our town meeting could, would be taking up the matter on November 4th, that I can go and support the similar bill that Norton has already filed, which his committee will hear in a couple of weeks from now.
All right. Sounds good.
Move this board's selectmen vote to reopen the warrant for the November 4th, 2013 special town meeting. Insert thereon a home rule petition relative to the subsidized housing inventory and close the warrant.
Second. What should have been made in second, open and close the warrant and add the, the home rule petition. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Now, we have the order recommendations.
I'll go over. Yeah, I'll go over this briefly.
You have a agenda?
That, yes, the, the presentation here is as, reflects the order that has been recommended by the study committee to increase voter participation. If you look at the sheet right under, under that one, that they're, just to see what their recommendations are, first that upon the recommendation, the advice of the town moderator.
Yep.
To have the articles appear in the warrant in three groups. First is financial articles upfront, as we've discussed, those are important things, even if they don't take in the super majority, it's important to have with a large group. Next would come articles requiring a super majority. And then third is basically all other, all non-financial articles that only require a simple majority vote. So, applying those three standards, we, we only had to essentially take the, the draft list that we've seen before, pull three of them out, pull what was Article 6, 7, 8.
Yep.
The enterprise fund for profit and lack, the OPEB liability trust fund and the CPA amendment. And, and instead of having those appear 6, 7 and 8 in the order, they would appear as 11, 12 and 13. So, no other, no other changes to that. The article that he's ordered to insert frankly fits neatly in the final position number 16 because it only requires a simple majority vote and it's not a financial one.
So, to me, this sounds like a collaborative process. The moderator gave his input and then the committee to increase voter participation provided their input. We have an ordering here and it seems to me that we should be ready for a vote.
The only other thing I'd want to mention is, and actually I feel very strongly about this, that, that the process that we just went through now for the special town meeting is, that's what we should institutionalize, in my humble opinion, for future town meetings, not necessarily a bylaw change that says we're going to do something 9:30 or not. Jury's out on that, we can have that discussion. But what I would feel would be of great value would be to build into our process when we have like the penultimate list of articles, sit down with the committee, invite their recommendations on what the order should be and then present the joint recommendation to you when it comes time to post the warrant. And there'll be a lot more in the annual town meeting, there'll be a lot more to discuss and, and just how items might be positioned to, you know, to ensure that they are interesting articles to keep people's attention throughout the night, or nights. Those are things that I, I think would be of great value to walk the committee through.
This process seems to be very much in line with what I want to gain and it seemed about you and I, Alex Pratt, were talking about at the last meeting where we get some sort of priorities. So, I know you were vocal about this before, do you have anything to add?
Speaking just, speaking just for myself, I have.
Yourself as a committee member.
As a, maybe.
And the leader of this point last time, yeah.
Right. Well, I haven't conferred with my fellow members here, give a critical speech if I say anything around this. My, my concern with, with this approach would just be that policy can change pretty simply. If we do craft a, a bylaw that meets your concerns and our concerns at the same time and we feel would fit better, it would be a more permanent solution to the problem. Just, just to make sure that this policy that Keith is supporting wouldn't necessarily disappear right away with the new board or, you know, with a new.
And I think as we talked earlier. You could even do that much in a bylaw. That, I mean, in essence, what we're talking about is what's, you know, in some communities it might be called the warrant committee or something. But in essence, what we're looking for is to institutionalize getting advice on how to order the articles in the warrant. I mean, it could be something that says the, that says the board of selectmen shall consult. or something, but in essence, what we're looking for is to institutionalize getting advice on how to order the articles in the warrant. I mean, it could be something that says the, that says the Board of Selectmen shall consult with the committee, I guess we'll have to make it a standing committee, in essence, you're just a study committee now, but to somehow write in that there will be, whatever the process is, to, to have a thoughtful review of the order of the articles, and bring that to the selectmen for the recommendation.
I think this is, I think this is good, we can talk about bylaw. I think what you talked about, how policies can change, boards can change, and if we have it as a bylaw, and the board's opinion changes on that, it's much harder to change that, where if you have a policy, it's much easier to change to the, to the, to the changing board and things like that. So, we can talk about that more. I think for right now, I think this really accomplishes the goal of what you were suggesting in our last meeting, and-
Long-term discussions notwithstanding, I think this is a good place to be, and it's close to politics.
All right, I'll look for motion.
Mr. Chair.
I'll look for, you have something to add, something new?
Yes, I do. You know, one of the important things here is this, we undertook this project, and the town moderator weighed in, and it worked out well. But we, we need to, I agree that we need to look at a bylaw down the road, but, but we need to try this. And, and then reassess where we are when we have some more time to look at it. So, I'm sort of agreeing with both, but let's get it through this town meeting, see if it works, tweak it, and then maybe look down the road to, to bylaw.
Motion.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the order of which the articles appear on the warrant for November 4th, 2013 special town meeting, as recommended by the study committee, to increase voter participation, as amended. Is this the first one?
No, this is their, this is their-
Yeah, strike as amended, yeah, we're taking it as they've ordered it.
Yeah.
And to direct the-
And to direct the constable to post said warrant forthwith.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, do we want to go through each article and vote individually for whether or not we support them, or do we want to take it as a whole?
You can, and you can start tonight, that, that we are still working on some recommendations for, we will have additional information for your meeting on October 7th.
Or do I just take them all at that point?
Yeah.
I'd like to take them all at that point.
Okay, why would we do that then?
What's want to comment, you want to comment, Joe?
On Article 13, I read it over and over again, I'm confused on the last paragraph, when it talks about the, the 1%. On this last paragraph, are we increasing the tax, are we just allowing to use the funds to go up to 3%?
I think we're renewing, I think we're renewing this, right? The law changed?
Yeah, we're accepting, we're accepting the new section of the law, which says that in order to put, in order to use our own funds to, to, in order to put our own funds into the Community Preservation Fund, we have to adopt that language-
Yeah.
-that's in the last paragraph, and it's confusing.
So we'll go through this at town meeting, or we're saying it's not an increase, we're still going to be the 1%?
Yeah, and which is, which is sort of why in that one, we tried to, we, we're experimenting with the idea of warehouse clauses in Article 13 and in Article 7.
Actually, she-
I'm sorry, Article 6, by way of offering an explanation of what, what are we up to? So we thought on the CPA, because there were so many questions that came about this article last time, it said to town council, we need to explain a little more what's going on. So, yes, we've already adopted the CPA, 1% surcharge, we're not redoing that, yes, we've got, we've got exemptions of value, but what we're doing is that we're, desire to accept the provisions of the amended law in order to make an additional commitment of local funds to increase the base for state matching funds. That's the goal. We're not increasing the surcharge beyond 1%. It stays at 1%. But we are allowed to, to use our local funds to increase the, the equivalent-
To the 3%.
So here's the kicker, here's the kicker that we were talking about. It's the sentence that says, funded, fund by dedicating municipal revenue of 2% of the taxes levy against real estate, real property. So, that is where Joe and I had a discussion in regards to 2%, it shouldn't be 2%, it should be 1%.
Well, we're at 1%.
We're at 1%.
We're at 1%. And what it means to say-
And that's the additional-
A DOR has prescribed this language, which I wish we could put something, I mean, maybe we need another, yet another warehouse clause. But what, what the law says, you've got, in our case, we've got our 1% surcharge, the law says that we can, we can, we can add into the fund the equivalent of another 2% as the, to increase the base for the-
Because the most that we can put in as a community, we can, is 3%. Okay, so this allows us to make up that between the 1 and the 3.
Got it, got it. So the concern was that it was a 1%, so it really doesn't say that, hey, that money we're going to dump in, that extra money is going to be equivalent to the 2%. That wording kind of makes it sound like we're going to increase the 2% on the tax.
Well, how about the-
So some clarification there, maybe.
Or under the plain language, just put it in there. I mean, I see just one paragraph here for the plain language portion, can't you add in, can we expand that and explain?
Sure, yeah, we can put additional language. I wish I could rewrite the operative language in the article to say what we want it to say.
But in the-
We have to do what DOR tells us to do.
In the booklet, you know, from town meeting, I mean, I think if you put two paragraphs, two sentences in there, you could stop a lot of questions on town meeting.
Exactly, sure, exactly.
So, okay.
So just to say that we're not going to 2%.
All right, so we'll table the whether or not we're going to support it, we'll come back at the October 7th.
Another question for Joe, did, when you read that, did the warehouse clauses help explain it? Or what was your feeling on that? I had no problem with the first, like, three paragraphs, it was just the last full sentence.
It's the operative language.
Yeah, at the very end. And I reread it over and over again, like Jimmy said, then the last one, it talks about, you know, 1% in, in, it's not like it's an increase, that's-
All right.
I just have a quick-
Yes, Town Clerk, yes.
Thank you, it's 13th Street. Just that the last part of our recommendation is talking about the warehouse language.
Yeah.
And, and our committee that is requesting the Board of Selectmen require a town council, if we could do a straw poll, I don't know if it's legal, but we'd like to know if during the night, when people are hearing that whole article today, and whereas, 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 if they're understanding it better, even though we're giving them the booklet, if they understand it, and if we think that, if they think that it's the right way to go.
Do you want that straw poll at-
We won't be reading the warehouse clauses.
Right, but-
Not out loud.
So we're asking, our committee is asking this board, if you could ask town council-
We're as the committee is recommended.
We're recommending that, we ask town council legally, if you do a straw poll that evening, when those two whereases, whereas articles are done, if people are understanding them. I know that we're going to have it in plain language, but we want to know if they think that's the right way to go.
Can you just ask moderator, can tell moderators, he could probably bring that up outside.
I don't know, that's why we're saying, we don't know if it's something outside of his ability or not-
He's, yeah.
-to, to do a straw poll during the evening, so.
Yeah, I don't think, I think if you know, it's not policy, but that's my reading, but if you, Keith, can you ask them both to see if, what they think?
Sure.
I mean, that's fine, just, I think it should be a quick answer for somebody who's more likely.
We're test driving the idea, I mean, the, the idea is to put more information out in the, in the articles themselves, not that they, they still don't speak for themselves, you still have to explain them, but we wanted to, we wanted to try to say more, a statement of what are we trying to do, what's our purpose.
Yeah, and then if not, if it doesn't work, well, there's a way to do it. Did you get that information back, I'm sure?
No, we're, we're just, we're just seeking to see if the, if one, moderator would be willing to do the straw poll at, at the time, you know, live feedback from the town meeting, and whether, two, whether it is legal to do that.
That's what I got from Dan, yeah. Okay, medical marijuana.
Okay, so that, yeah, and that'll be next Monday night then, that we'll, we'll start and finish all the recommendations of these articles.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Is moderator going to be here for that? Is he going to meet with us before town meeting? Because one thing we usually do at town meetings, special town meetings, is that we all choose an article, and we used to read them, but Tim has gotten away from that, so I wonder if we even need to assign articles to each selectman, and I didn't know if that was part of your plan, if you want to talk to Tim and come back.
Yeah, we should probably talk about that, I mean, part, part of it is an art, is the art more than the science of town meeting, and I personally am in the opinion that silence is not golden, and whoever gets the microphone first gets to frame the issue. And so I think it's important to, for articles that the board supports, to stand up and say something, and even if it's that the, you know, to read the motion, or to, or to read the, read the recommendation.
I thought it was always helpful to have the selectmen read a motion and kind of, and give a brief explanation of what it's about, I always-
Yeah, we have moved away, I think inadvertently, we moved away from that, only because what used to be your script for what you'd read at the microphone, we now publish-
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
-in the booklet, and we share it with everyone, you know, six weeks in advance, so.
All right, why don't you start, Tim, I'll go back to Tim, see what he wants to do.
I think it would be helpful, though, for the board to, you know, to assign articles as always, and to have a, have the meeting voters hear from the selectmen on those articles that you recommend.
Okay.
We'll talk about it with them.
All right, thank you. And so now we have update on medical marijuana, I think we'll go right to Keith on this one, he's been doing a lot of work, and then I know Anne Larue from the Board of Health here, is here, and she's been doing a lot of research, and if you want to give some input after Keith, we'd love to hear from you.
Okay, a couple of updates to note. First, the Department of Public Health of the Commonwealth, last Monday issued the results of their review of so-called Phase 1 applications for RNDs, registered marijuana dispensaries, and of the 181 applicants who submitted applications in Round 1, that they are proceeding with a total of 158. So just a handful really fell off the list. But what they also did was they released, or posted electronically, all the copies of the, of the applications that were submitted, that, that survived the Phase 2. What DPH did not do was then tally which of those applications, or what towns, the dispensary and cultivation sites were proposed in each town. I guess relying on any interested party to go through 158 applications themselves, which seemed kind of silly. So, to the rescue came the Massachusetts Municipal Association, who we've been in contact with for over a month, that also trying to get information on DPH about, about what the proposed sites are in these, in these applications. And, and last, late last week, the Mass Municipal Association posted at its website, a, its tally, its analysis of those, of those applications, which interestingly, did not list Littleton in any of the applications that were filed, neither as a dispensary site nor a cultivation site. And that omission includes the three applications that were submitted by Planting Hope, John Napoli, who I would say inexplicably appeared here on the evening of August 22nd and told us that we're the proposed cultivation site for his three applications in Essex County, Suffolk, and Barnstable, when the applications that had, that had been submitted on his behalf earlier that day listed the town of Yarmouth as the proposed cultivation site for those three applications. Now, the fact that Littleton, now, that's the, that's one thing. The fact that Littleton is not listed in any of the applications that were reviewed in Phase 1 does not mean that we cannot be listed in an application that goes forward in Phase 2. I attended a briefing that the Mass Municipal Association gave last Friday morning, it's my understanding, and I didn't verify the date, but, but they announced that, that essentially applicants have until this Friday to submit their, to, to notify the chief administrative officers and chiefs of police of whatever communities they're intending to have as the sites in their Phase 2 application. So, whenever, so they will soon, in any event, they will soon be approaching a deadline when if someone, if, if there is an application, a formal application that would list Littleton say for a cultivation site, that is information that the DPH regs say we are, we are supposed to find out from the applicant by a definitive deadline, which will be soon approaching. So if we are notified, so notified, that, that our name is going to be on someone's application, then we will then know that that, that is an issue to, to, to deal with, we will then officially know that. And if that happens, then we would want to manage the, the process, to think of how, of what public, manage that part of the licensing process that DPH will be doing, where public support or opposition becomes a factor from the, from the proposed host communities. In the regulations, it indicates, although it doesn't give any particular weight, it does say that, that an applicant, that in this competitive process that these 158 applicants are going through to get 35 licenses, in, in, at least one in each county, would, that public support gets you an extra point, or gets you rounding points, and, or public non-opposition gets you the points. Public opposition doesn't seem to subtract, from what we can see, doesn't seem to subtract anything off the point score, you just don't get the point. And, and what's not clear is what the relative weight is, and all the criteria that DPH considers. But nevertheless, if we have the opportunity to provide input to DPH on the matter of public support or opposition to, to a proposed dispensary or cultivation site in our town, that's something that I think the Board of Selectmen would want to manage that process in, in some fashion, not, you know, sort of akin to what we did when we were the, were on the receiving end of another state agency's determination, when we couldn't control where the mass development was going to issue a letter of eligibility to a 40B project, that all we could do is manage the public input process so that we made sure that that state agency had a full picture of what our local concerns were. I think that's probably the, the role that we would want to try, that we, we would want to manage in a single fashion. At the end of the day, we don't decide, it's not a local decision, it's a state decision, but still that there is public input that, that needs to be gathered locally, and we've done that, I think, you know, we, the, this table was, it's been done before, and we're seeing the appropriate place to do it.
Okay. Anne Larue?
Okay, thank you.
Would you like to, how would you like to-
Forty-nine, I know you drive, for the record.
Board of Health chair.
Board of Health chair. I went to several of the trainings that DPH offered, more so out of curiosity for what the Board of Health could do, but also townwide effort, what we could do collectively with the different boards, and how possibly we could implement maybe some of the control points, as I would phrase them, in the regulation. So, I'm approaching it different from, from Keith, I'm looking at it as a public health practitioner, what, what would we need to do, what could we do, what should we do? I did forward to you all the presentation notes from General Counsel, MDPH, and basically, some of the gray areas from last spring have been defined. I'm not going to go through them all, but I will tell you that now, a 60-day supply of marijuana has been defined. It is 10 ounces of product, okay? That, that's a lot, but that's what they defined it as. There are also other ways that-
Some knowing glances around, huh? Why are we talking about, what are you talking about?
That is a lot.
I can't, there's no way to talk about it.
Massive amount.
Okay, so, and there's, there's other updates that they have to find.
It'd be a mountain of them.
It is a mountain.
It's the fog of war.
It is about 10 ounces, think about it, it's almost, almost three quarters of a pound. So, at any rate, that's the 60-day definition. And other things like that have more clearly been defined. I passed on to Keith and Jen this afternoon, just an article that sort of, doesn't give a lot of super great data in terms of what really can, can you find in adolescent and youth- I passed on to Keith and Jim this afternoon just an article that sort of doesn't give a lot of super great data in terms of what really can, can you find in adolescent and youth pleasure use, for lack of a better word, recreational use of marijuana, once a state has implemented a medical marijuana law. However, I have also read other data that does suggest that, yes, it does go up. So, in this article that I cast on, there are some areas where it did go up, some areas where it didn't. So, really, the jury's still out on, on that effect. My, my other concern or desire would be to start some kind of a committee, task force, whatever you want, combined from different boards that are interested, not limiting any boards, to maybe work on some of these control points. The law is kind of lengthy, and does everyone have the time to read through it all and poke through it? Probably not. I'm going to be going through it from a Board of Health standpoint, and our board has not definitively decided one way or the other how we're going to handle anything. So, this is just me coming to you saying, gee, I think it would be good to get a committee, and my board is aware that I went to the trainings and I'm going to be handling some of this stuff. So, those are my recommendations, and I think that we, we shouldn't in any way, as Keith said earlier, for different reasons, consider ourselves off the hook at all, because it's a minimum of one per county, but then it can go up to, I think, five, and you just never know. After someone gets a satellite, they can expand and change the laws, they can also change, Mass Department of Public Health can also change their laws. So, that's it.
Great, thanks for all that work. I know you did a lot of that on your own time and at your expense, so appreciate that.
You're welcome.
So, I think what we want to do now is we want to talk to, meet with the planning board, the Board of Health, have a joint meeting, and I know Keith, you have a motion written, do we have to do that, or do we just want to invite them to a meeting? I mean, does everybody agree, either way?
I think it's--
Does everyone agree that's the next step?
Yeah, I mean, it's an opportunity, again, where the, the ball is arguably in the planning board's court right now because we're in the, the phase of a zoning moratorium where the purpose is to come up with a proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw. So, while it's sort of in their, in their court, nevertheless, again, the way we've done things when it's a matter of community leadership called for, it's a joint effort of this board and the other affected boards, which in this case would need to include the Board of Health--
Sure.
--as well, so.
We could also proceed, sorry, factored in, we could also proceed too if you wanted to joint meet, and when the planning board is ready, they can jump on, because we have a whole set of stuff that has nothing to do with planning board, but directly affects our laws, that would be good to have other perspectives and the selectmen buy in.
Okay, all right. Either way, it was a board's pleasure, want to meet with the Board of Health and then try to get the planning board in here too?
Yeah, that makes sense. The question is, is when, you know, we got town, town meeting coming up. Well, when is, when is phase two going to, when are they predicting phase two to be done, do we even know?
He knows more about that than I do.
Yeah, I was going to say, let me just make a work at the update.
And thank you for your emails, Keith.
Sure, thank you.
Very good.
Could we do what we did with the extensive recreational use bylaw committee and--
Because that went so well.
Hey. We did a good effort.
Well, we could come in on Monday night for part of a time or a section or--
Yeah, yeah.
Before or whatever, that'd be fun.
Yeah, the, phase two applications are due within forty-five days after the announcement date, so it's September twenty-third plus forty-five, so--
Okay, so that's the first week of November or something. So, the only thing that we're working on, or that I guess me at this point, minus the rest of the board that's interested in working on it, would be that we would like to hammer out a few things, and we could certainly go ahead and work on that.
Do you want to meet again as board before you meet with us?
Well, we will meet, I will discuss with my board, however, I think it's--
Okay, I just didn't know if you were meeting with them before our next meeting.
We will have finished, I think we could probably schedule it for October twenty-first. You meet in October on the seventh and the twenty-first. The seventh is when we're going to complete action, anything that we're going to do to get ready for town meeting, we need to do next Monday night. So, that would give us a little more room on the twenty-first.
We're going to know by Friday, right?
Twenty-first would be great.
Essentially, we're going to know by Friday if anybody--
Yeah, we'll know on Friday about the, about the licensing matter, but we'll still, you know, we still have some--
You're proactive and suddenly reactive, I understand.
Jim, what we want to do is we want to get stuff set up so that if ten years down the road, five years down the road, we got it covered.
I got you.
It'll all be recreationally approved in ten years. You know, maybe I watch too much weeds, but that's, that's what I foresee.
Legalize it in Texas.
So, part, I meet with the board, our board meets on the eighth of October, so would it be acceptable if maybe two or three members of our board come, if not all can come?
How do you want to handle it?
Sure, yeah, have them all. Joint meeting.
Okay.
Just, yeah.
Joint meeting for whoever--
You guys, you want to post it, just in case.
And a target date of October twenty-first.
About time, do you think, like, beginning or before or sometime?
I know, but we were so far ahead.
Yeah, probably seven-thirty, because it's, we've got older members.
Older members?
Yes, a little bit.
The oldest member.
I'm not the oldest member.
No, no, I mean--
I can't say.
The members of our board as the perhaps, I don't know, speaking on school.
Okay, so October twenty-first, about seven-thirty.
Longest serving.
The makeup plan.
Since the Roosevelt--
He is, definitely.
Teddy.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Make a motion, you're good.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Wow, that's an hour and a half earlier than last time.
Yeah, but it's, it's not bad, eight fifty-five, nine fifteen, it's about right.
That was much better.
Yeah.
That was rough.